Now across the region, temperatures are in the mid 30s. It's 5:30.
It's all things considered from NPR News, I'm Mary Louise Kelly.
And I'm Ari Shapiro. Look out arts world, unions are coming.
I think there's just a general progression of work increasing, workforce decreasing, and expectation of doing more with less. So I think that there's been that kind of dissatisfaction for a while.
That's ahead.
No, I'm sorry. We're not getting that yet. I just wanted to double check if there was a charter issue or anything. All right, very good. Welcome to the committee of all. Just how we run these things is we have you give us a really quick introduction of yourself and why you want to serve on the elected office of compensation. And then we will ask questions if necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I have been a resident of Lansing. I'm 67 and about 50 of those years I have spent in the city of Lansing, last 20 of which I live on Oxford in the 4th Ward. And I was asked to submit my name for the Compensation Commission. And I served on that commission probably 25 years ago when Terry McCain was the mayor of Lansing. So I have some sense of the process and how it's supposed to work. And, you know, with that, you know, I've been a businessman my entire life. I owned a business based downtown Lansing for 35 years. And I'm retired now and looking for this opportunity. I think it'd be fun. And then more importantly perhaps is that I served on the Ingham County Board of Commissioners from 1976 till 1982. And during that time, I learned a great deal about the sacrifice and the work that's involved in representing the people. And I've never forgotten that. I take it seriously. And I hope I can add to the discussion on the compensation for this commission or this council and the other elected officials. I'm flattered and anxious to serve on the Compensation Commission. And the one thing I need to let you all know is that as I age, my hearing has been parked somewhere that I cannot find. So if you... My wife is the chief judge of the district court, but that is aside from the decisions that will be made by this commission. And the answer to that is no. Well, you know, it's up to her to make a public announcement, but it's within 35 days. Don't tell her I said that. I'm sorry, Mr. ... That shouldn't be a problem. Thank you. Thank you all.
I did. I saw how he conducted himself. I will try and keep it brief like he did. Thank you, Mr. President and Chair of the Committee. My name's Steve Young and I live in Ward 4, not too far from actually where Tom lives. But anyways, I've updated, when I reapplied for this, my updated resume didn't get included for some reason, and that's probably because I'm retired. And I don't really need to have a resume anymore because who's going to retire an old retired guy? But my resume kind of echoes Tom's quite a bit. I've lived in Lansing, in Lansing area since 1973, in Lansing proper since 1994. And like I said, I retired officially last year in July, middle of the year. So now I have some time to do this kind of thing and I'm happy to do it. When I was approached, I'm very pleased and honored to be asked to serve on the EOCC. And, you know, Lansing has been a very special place to me over the years. I pretty much moved to this area when I graduated from high school and been here pretty much ever since. Also, in my personal career, worked in government, had a business like Tom did for roughly about the same amount of time. But in that, in that job, in that line of work I did, I did a lot of work with public officials. I understand, probably even though I've never held public office, I understand very, very well the sacrifices that are made to be a public servant. On the other hand, I also recognize that you have constituencies and there's a push-pull here in determining salaries for, for anybody, state legislators, commissioners, whatever it might be, is a very, very difficult thing. And I understand that and I understand it's a very important responsibility. But I also understand that, you know, there's a lot of different factors that have to be weighed in this, not just the finances, but public perception, and then also as well, you know, the, the work that you do that a lot of times is not seen, I think, by, by people. And I have a very keen sense of awareness of that. So anyways, I'm, I'm happy to do this and I'm happy to serve and I was happy to be asked and happy to respond to any questions you might have, Mr. President. I can keep talking too, so.
I don't know if this is an issue where we officially have a quiet, can, can put the king's, we have a maintenance group down there. From that maybe you want to, um, like, um, do this almost like, um... What, what is, you know, being, being retired and not a lot changing? I can't, I can't think of a life like you would. I don't, unless something changed, I can think of a life where...
If I could just add, some of that might have been my, my fault too. We were traveling and I was having a hard time finding disinformation. So some of that may have been on me, then I tried to update it. And I'm not sure it went through, but anyways, I just, some of that could have been on me. Sorry.
You know, not from a same ward because that's kind of a geographical consideration, but I think the board should also, you know, work on thought diversity and because it could be the same ward but have completely different places and circumstances and socioeconomics and all that. So that's just another way to, to look at it besides just where they're from geographically.
Yeah, and I will also, this is an issue that we could talk about, not tonight. I would like to dispense with Mr. Young's appointment first, but this is ordinance. We can change that as well if that's something that folks want to take a look at in the future. The charter dictates the commission exists, but the ordinance operationalizes it so we can take a serious look at that when I'm not sitting right here. So when you do whatever, you guys do whatever you want. But I would, seeing no further questions from Mr. Young, I would ask for all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you. Thank you.
Because the meet, the commission doesn't meet until the 16th of February, it's not important that you're here tonight to get sworn in at 7:00. So you can, you can just arrange your time with the clerk after our meeting tonight to get sworn in before the 16th of February. Thank you. Unless, of course, you'd like to stay, in which case you're more than welcome to do so, but you don't have to stick around for the next meeting as well. All right. Next thing up is the General Fund Status Report for fiscal year 2021-22 with Jake Brower.
It's a pleasure to be here.
All right, Jake, you are up. We appreciate you being here. And again, this is for, this is a General Fund Status Report fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Deals with the first quarter.
Excellent. So looking at the General Fund Status Report that I provided to you, this covers the period of fiscal year 2021-2022 from July 1st to September 30th. Overall, looking at last year, we budgeted to end FY '21 with $14.1 million in combined general fund reserves. For FY '22, we budgeted $133,000 or $133 million in total revenues, including transfers, and $151 million in total expenditures. With the use of federal funds of $18 million, we have an estimated ending fund balance of $14 million, $731,852. The annual financial audit is in process. We have submitted an initial final trial balance to our auditors and we should have final numbers available to you by the end of next month. Our auditors will be available to speak to the results of the financial audit in early in January at your leisure. The city's fund balance policy recommends a fund balance between 12% and 15% of expenditures, which is a target threshold spanning $18.15 million to $25.69 million. The administration continues to explore options to restore fund balance and we look forward to discussing that over the next budget season. On the next couple of pages, you can see a narrative summary of our revenues and expenditures. I will skip over into the raw numbers, looking at page four. Overall, looking at the September 30, 2022 revenue summary, we are on track or ahead of where we anticipated we would be at this time of year. Looking at our, going over the columns in general, on your left, you'll see the different revenue categories being property taxes, income taxes, Board of Water and Lights, return on equity payment, state revenues, charges for services, and so forth. The three columns with numbers, for dollar amounts, you will have our FY '22 adopted budget, FY '22 budget as amended, and September 30th actuals. The final two columns are year-to-date percentages, the first one being September 30th actuals year-to-date as of the amended budget, and then the last column being the three-year average year-to-date at this time period. Starting from the top at property taxes, you'll notice that we are well ahead of the three-year average. This is largely due to accounting entries that need to occur for LBRA Lansing Brownfield and our TIFA Tax Increment Finance Authority capture. So once those accounting entries are done, we anticipate it'll be very close to our budgeted amount. Income taxes are also ahead of budget at 16.4% relative to 12.5% of year-to-date expenses. As I've said to you on numerous occasions before, COVID-19 has been a very uncertain time in terms of what we can expect from our income taxes. Income taxes in particular are particularly susceptible to changes in economic conditions. And with remote work, we faced through the end of last year, the possibility that we may have to return a lot of funds due to people who have done withholding throughout the entire course of the fiscal year and then claim half of percent of their taxes back due to working remotely in other locations. Fortunately, it appears that we have not hit the worst-case scenarios that we had projected, but are doing, will have a little bit better outlook going forward, as you can see from the current year-to-date amount. When it comes to Board of Water and Lights return on equity payment, this year we have, we are in the final year of our fixed payments that we have negotiated with the Board of Water and Light. We will receive a $12.5 million payment in December and another $12.5 million payment in June. For state revenues, we are on track with what we'd expect for this time of year. We have not yet, oh, after this report, we had received our first revenue sharing payment, but that, before September 30th, we don't have anything to report for that. For our remaining revenues, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, licenses, et cetera, we are roughly on track with where we'd expect in relation to our budget. Moving on to the next page into our departmental expenditures, you can take a look down the line of each of our departments. And overall, there are no departments with year-to-date expenditures exceeding what we'd expect at this time of year. At this time, you can look at the following pages, which provide additional detail in the form of a budget appropriation summary document and also governmental summary, which breaks out some of the costs such as retirement, information technology, and fleet expenses from given departments to represent those specific charges as opposed to what is discretionary to a department's budget. Are there any questions at this time?
Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you, Mr. Brower, for presenting this tonight. I just have a couple of questions on our appropriations. For the Neighborhood and Citizen Engagement Department, we're about 10% under projections. And then for Public Service, we're about 8% under projections. Those are our two highest differences. Could you give us some explanation of why we're not spending to the levels that we expect there?
Looking at our Neighborhoods and Citizens Engagement Department, the majority of those, that expenditure difference, looking at the budget appropriation summaries, are differentiating from personnel and operating. The biggest difference is operating costs. And one of the peculiar factors of the Neighborhoods and Citizens Engagement Department is several major contracts that they have, being the Lansing SAVE program, the Financial Empowerment Center. And so when we do issue these payments, I would say that this is largely a difference in timing of expenditures as opposed to the specific departmental choices. As far as Public Service, I would have to look in more detail to respond to that question.
Okay, that'd be great. You can just shoot me an email. I'm interested in that and thank you for that explanation. Thank you, President Spatafor.
No problem. Any questions? Yeah. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. In looking at the vacancy factor and knowing that we've had trouble hiring, what are you seeing in regards to that?
Could you repeat the second half of that question or the question?
I said, knowing that we have had trouble hiring... I said, knowing that we have had trouble hiring, and with the vacancy factor, we've got down as 1.4 million. So what, what are you seeing? I would think that we're seeing an increase in that vacancy factor.
I would say that our $1.4 million is an ambitious target. However, with the struggles that we are having in hiring, I believe we're going to hit that target, as we can see with our vacancy report year-to-date. One of the challenges that we have is, while it's great to receive all these vacancy savings, it's, from a bottom-dollar perspective, it looks great on our financial statements. It does come with a significant operational impact that we have to address, and so it is not our goal to keep extra vacancies on our budget for the purpose of financial advantage, but rather, our HR team is working full-time to try and get these positions funded, or not funded, but hired up, so that we can be at our full potential.
And have we had requests from departments for additional overtime?
Yes.
And what is the average that we're seeing based on that?
I would have to look at the average overtime cost by department, but that would be just a general ledger report we could pull.
Okay, if you could get us some information on that. Also, in, not only in the income tax portion, where we have people working from home, a number of state offices are in commercial buildings that they lease. Are we seeing additional tax tribunal questions out there, or those coming before the assessor for reduction in taxes?
I do believe we've received an increase in tax tribunal cases. I am not sure whether the state buildings are part of those cases, but I could direct your question towards our city assessor.
Okay.
Sharon Fishman.
If we could get some additional information on that, I would appreciate it. That answers my question.
Okay. Before we move on, I did ask some questions too, but maybe you can't answer them now. Do you see a stabilization in our revenue problems, or not? I know I've talked about this in Ways and Means, where I'm really, I'm relatively concerned. We have some federal cash to float, but I'd rather not use the entirety of our second tranche of federal money to keep the city budget afloat. We should start looking at, are we stabilizing, or is this whole now a structural deficit? Is there, is there deficit? Is there a structural one, all that kind of stuff? Or is it too early to tell yet?
I would say that our preliminary projections continue to show that we are in a structural deficit. I would estimate, based on preliminary numbers I'm getting, which are not finalized, that last year's income taxes are not as bad as we had feared, so we're not facing necessarily an $18 million gap in our general fund, but it might be, say, half of that, in which case, it's still a challenge for us, but it buys us a couple extra years of being able to resolve our structural deficit.
Okay.
We do have significant challenges with our parking fund in terms of the revenues we have received, and so that'll be another area where we'll be projecting whether or not we need to reallocate the revenue loss funds from general fund to parking, or how we allocate that as a whole picture, in terms of the full number that we received, how much we need for budget stabilization between now and 2024, and how much we can then invest into the community. And I believe the mayor has a public meeting on the books for December 15th at 6:00 or 6:30 PM in the City Hall lobby, 6:30, to which we'll bring in as many stakeholders as possible to make their requests in public, so we can make an informed decision, knowing that the total dollar amount of what people are hoping to see out of these dollars, an update from us having, being even closer to the finalization of our audit on how much is available beyond a simple fiscal recovery, and then what are the community's needs, what are city employees' needs, and so forth.
Okay, great. I'm really, I did see the notice on that. I'm glad to hear that, and it's also nice to hear it's not as bad, but that you're thinking ahead to solving the structural problem rather than just relying on Washington to keep printing it, which we, which we all were guilty of last year, I think, everywhere. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like, continue, please.
Oh, that's pretty much all I have as far as the report goes.
Very good. Other questions on the general fund before we move to the vacancy report? All right, for the vacancy report, we're going to talk to, looks like Jake Brower's up again. Jake, go for it.
Glad to be here. Overall, the vacancy report, you can see the columns. First column is department that these vacancies belong to. You have the account number, the key to which each of these positions was funded, position description, information, bargaining unit, FTE, full-time equivalency, the date of the vacancies, and an estimate of the financial impact of those positions being vacant. Overall, looking at the general fund, there is a projected $742,000 savings as of September 30th. This may not fully account for additional factors such as temporary help, overtime, although we, I'm going to try and get those additional figures to Carol Wood in response to her question. Looking at our non-general fund vacancies or non-vacancy factor, there's another $700,000 in projected savings. Now, following up to what I've said previously, our HR team is working practically day and night in order to get these positions posted, as you may have noticed on our hiring website, Just this past week, we posted the buyer position in our finance department to try and get a full-time replacement. We've been blessed by our current buyer continuing to work with us. I know other departments are getting their positions posted, and overall, we're working towards developing next year's budget. So these vacancies have been sent out to departments as part of their budget forms and documents.
Okay. Any question? I have questions about, go ahead. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. In looking at this, one of the things I asked last time, and ask again, under the contract, I had asked if we could have a breakdown as to what that contract is costing or saving at this particular time. So if we could get that baked into this report, I would appreciate it.
I'll look into that. Thank you.
All right. And then my other question would be, has the administration thought anything about looking at either bonuses, or if some of these are requiring education, factors that people might not be able to make when they're applying, that they be hired on a temporary basis and given the ability to get the education, to bring them up to the qualified position?
I would have to let the city administration speak to that. Some of those items, bonuses, would be a collective bargaining issue, so I would not be able to talk to that specifically at all. As far as educational requirements for job postings and offering them at a lower level while providing training opportunities to get to the requirement, that might also be a bargaining issue. I'm not particularly familiar.
If that's, if that's something that could be looked into and then brought back and give council some kind of information on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Vice President Hussein.
I think just more of a comment. As I have followed a few of these vacancies, from the, you know, from the creation of potentially a new job description, to the actual job posting, to the actual kind of assembling of a candidate pool, to the scheduling of interviews, to, you know, and back up to the testing, to the scheduling of interviews, to the scheduling of second interviews, it is an incredibly long process, and I think, I think it's drawn out even more because we, we just don't have the capacity within our own HR department. When you look at the number of hiring specialists we have or don't have, when you look at the position of principal recruiter, when you look at, so I think come budget time, we have to have some very serious conversations about that shop, what that shop looks like, and the capacity that it has, because this right now, in terms of a market for employees, is a very difficult one. And when you have people that are applying for five in 10 positions, and they're hearing from 90% to 95% of those, you know, potential employers before they're hearing from the city of Lansing, we, we're losing, right? We're losing out. And so I think that's part of the reason why we're having such a difficult time staffing positions. I have a question, I don't know if either one of you guys can answer. When I look at this, a little concerned with regard to, I see that the police chief position was vacant as of 6/24/2021. We know obviously that the, we actually consulted with a firm, we put out a, an application, I think some 20 people applied for that. We then had a panel that whittled that down to two. We had a public forum, and I believe that Andy Shore has interviews with those two individuals, Captain Mattson and interim chief Sozabie tomorrow, believe it or not, and then I think he has to, there's some, some dance he has to do with the board of commissioners before deciding. Then when I look at the fire chief, we have had a vacancy with regards to our fire chiefs since September 4th of 2020. Can either of you speak, I mean, obviously, you know, this might be a conversation for HR or the mayor later tonight, but can anybody speak to why it has taken so doggone long to get the ball rolling on the fire chief piece? Is that imminent? Where are we at with that?
Yeah, I could speak in rough terms. In rough terms, we currently have Elrie Sozabie working out of class as interim police chief right now. For the fire department, we have Greg, Chief Greg Martin, working on contract, and I believe his contract ends the end of this fiscal year? Yeah, end of calendar year. And so I think it's just a matter of timeline, the people that we had in place, and so we're, that's something we're going to be looking at, getting ahead.
I can add briefly that we've had some difficulties with the quality of candidates that we were looking for. We thought, in part, that was probably due to this being an election year and having the possibility that, especially a fire chief, would possibly be serving for such a brief time, that probably could have scared some applicants away. I know that before you, I think in council tonight, is a resolution that will allow us to offer a multi-year contract to our police and fire chiefs that will hopefully allow us to attract more candidates and better-quality candidates that see this as a longer-term job than just the current-year contracts that are allowed to be offered now.
And I appreciate that. So if we're talking about quality of candidates, I would assume that at some point, a job description did, or job posting did go live for that?
For, for which one? For the fire? Correct, yeah. Okay.
All right, seeing no further questions, no action is required. Thank you, Mr. Brower. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you.
Next item is Item F. It's a resolution setting a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance re-adopting the codified ordinances. Mr. Vice President, would you like me to pass the gavel and explain, or are you briefed on this?
I can move it, and then you can explain.
All right.
Can you do that?
Yep.
All right, I would move it.
All right, so as you all recall, well, four years ago now, I guess it was, we've, a lot of our laws expired accidentally, and as part of that learning process, we decided to annually re-codify them, and we're doing that tonight. So this will re-codify, this actually sets the public hearing to re-codify all of the ordinances of the city of Lansing as a pro forma action, so that that doesn't happen again to anyone serving on this body. So the hearing for that will be 12, 13, 20, 21, the last meeting of the calendar year. So, are there questions? Councilmember Wood.
I thought, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought we were supposed to do this at budget time.
We were, and it was an oversight from our office and everyone's office, and we're fixing that oversight, and we didn't have to do it this, we were, our plan is to do it every budget year.
Yes.
But because we do it for 10 years, we could have waited, but I was proving a point. So we're doing it this year.
Okay.
All right. If that makes sense.
So, we can look forward in the future to when we pass the budget. We will be re-codifying as well.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Really, only more like a six-month solution, but.
Okay.
Sometimes a point is worth making. All right, so there is a proper motion before us. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a resolution amending Council Rule 20, the manner of introduction and form. Mr. Vice President, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I would move the resolution dealing with amending city council meeting recordings policy.
Okay, not that one, but I will, we'll go to that one. That is the next item.
I skipped it.
Okay.
Yeah, are we on G?
We're on G.
Okay, let me resend that. I would move the resolution dealing with Council Rule Number 20. This deals with the manner of introduction of ordinances, specifically the form, and specifically as it pertains to amendments of ordinances.
Very good. I'll just set this up for folks. As you're aware, when we do our ordinance changes, we do it all in capital letters to signify a change and a strike-through to signify a deletion. It was brought to my attention that this is not entirely accessible for folks that may have trouble reading or seeing, because of the, there's not a lot of typography difference in capitalized letters, and looking into readability and accessibility, the best way to do these changes would be bolding text that's new and striking out text that is old. We went around in circles on whether we underline or not, and this ended up being Harvard's recommendations for most readability for people accessing our ordinances. So while not an enormous change, important for accessibility to city government. So Rule 20 is being amended to state that changes, new matters shall be bolded, and any unchanged ordinance language shall be in regular type, keeping stricken text for anything that's being removed. So I would ask for a motion, it has to sit, so, Councilmember Wood.
And just to clarify, this is a motion to introduce, which we cannot vote on tonight, but will vote on at our next council meeting.
It'll go to council tonight, and then we'll vote on the council on the 13th.
Correct.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, but we're voting it now out of committee of the whole.
Correct.
Yes.
And to introduce it.
Correct.
So as part of our city council meeting tonight, we are going to acknowledge receipt. We're going to review it, but there is no motion.
Correct. Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Just a question on whether the bold change goes back to, you know, older amendments, or is it just for the new ones?
So it'll, it'll be going forward, so anything, any changes that were made are now incorporated as regular text. So they, as soon as we adopt them, they become regular text, whether they were capitalized or not. So anything we introduce, starting probably the first of next year, all the resolutions will just have to look a little different, but old code won't change at all because it's all in regular type, because it's existing language. Makes sense? Okay, yeah, and to be, we're mirroring what they do across the street, which is not always the best example, but it's certainly good in this case, so. Did you have a question, Councilmember Garza?
No.
All right. Seeing no other questions, let's have a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, Mr. Vice President, the, we are now on H.
All right. I would, and I'm sorry, and because it's your committee, typically, I usually move it and you introduce.
Right.
I'll talk about it tonight at council, but this is the resolution to amend the city council.
Can you turn the microphone?
Sorry, this is the, assuming they can hear us right. This is the resolution to amend the city council meetings recordings policy.
Sure, and this one was brought to my attention. Mrs. Bulke here was assisting in sort of making sure our office was tidy upon our return to in-person meetings and whatnot, and we discovered closets full of VHS tapes, and consulted with the city attorney to see if we could get rid of them, and the city attorney informed us that one of our favorite former city council members, Joan Bauer, and some of her friends, decided that we needed to keep those in perpetuity, which is good for the purpose of history. However, we don't have a VHS player, so this is a recommendation that we can digitize all of those and get rid of the VHS tapes. So it's really just changing the resolution. So, it's really just changing the resolution and allowing those historical meetings to be maintained in accordance with best practices for storage of electronic materials rather than specifying a medium. Because who knows what 2023 will bring from a new medium. So, that would be that. So, are there questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a resolution related to the executive group benefits plan change to eliminate retirement healthcare benefits. Mr. Vice President?
Sure. I am going to actually move this, but I'm going to move it with a slight amendment. If you look at the front page under health savings account. Sorry. That's, it's an issue tonight. I apologize. If you look at the front page under healthcare savings account, this would be the third, I believe it's the sixth line. It reads entitled to receive that has benefit as opposed to HSA, health savings account benefit. So, with that being said,